I'd like to call the meeting of the Fiscal Affairs Committee. Chairman Loda is unavailable today. I will be, hopefully, filling in for him in an adequate fashion.
Just on this?
Sorry? Just on this? No. First action item, we have several action items. The first is approval of the minutes of the meeting of four February 2013. May I have a motion to do so? Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. The second action item is the Hunter College School of Arts and Sciences' approval of academic excellence fees for the pre-health professions post-baccalaureate certificate program. First, the award for the most unwieldy title of an initiative. This resolution has requested the Board of Trustees of the City of New York to approve the adoption of a schedule of academic excellence fees for students in the pre-health professions' post-baccalaureate certificate program at the School of Arts and Sciences, Hunter College, effective for the fall 2013 semester. It contemplates full-time resident students of a fee of $500, resident part-time students $50, and non-resident full-time and part-time students $90 per credit. The $500, by the way, for resident full-time students is per semester. The post-baccalaureate certificate program is a highly competitive program which challenges students through rigorous coursework in the sciences and mathematics to prepare them for applying to doctoral programs in the health professions. The revenue generated from these fees will add to the quality of support services such as the outreach of academic and career advising services and augment the program with tools to enhance its standing among post-baccalaureate pre-medical programs throughout New York. Hunter's tuition in this program is far less than those at comparable programs at schools such as NYU and Columbia. The college will continue to administer financial assistance to help students with the completion of their studies. This is one of the items, action items, that requires a vote. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Any discussion about?
Question. I believe this is the first time a certificate program was getting an academic excellence fee. And my recollection is that typically in the resolve, there's language that suggests that the fee will be used to support the program. Now, it's certainly in the explanation, but it is not in the resolve. And I just want to be clear, from my perspective, and I hope from the committee's perspective, that this fee will go to that program for the excellence, to enhance the excellence of that program. Because my fear is that if we're not careful here, someone will think this is a subliminal tuition increase.
I'm just reading an explanation that I'd like to share with everyone because I think your question, Professor Martel, is a good one. The revenue generated, as stated earlier, from these fees will add to the quality of support services, but to elaborate, it will be applied to outreach of academic and career advising services and augment the program with tools to enhance its standing among post-baccalaureate pre-medical programs throughout New York City. I think that that's, does that?
Well, that's certainly clear. My point is typically that was in the resolve.
Okay.
And it is not in the resolve here. And I just want to make sure that it is clear to everyone that that's the intention and that's the way we're voting on it.
Let me ask counsel, or is he, Rick, in the absence of it being in the resolve, is it perfectly adequate to have the record reflect that that's what this purpose is?
It's in the explanation.
Okay. Okay. I think it's a legitimate inquiry. Does that satisfy your question?
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion on this? That said, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. The next action item is there are two walk-on resolutions being brought for consideration by the committee. I understand Vice Chancellor Sapienza, these are walk-ons because they simply weren't prepared in time?
Correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
First is a resolution requesting that the City University of New York adopt a schedule of academic excellence fees for students in the Masters of Science in Accounting Program in the School of Arts and Science at Hunter, effective for fall 2013 semester. The amounts are the same as in the previous resolution, $500 per semester for resident full-time students, $50 per credit for resident part-time students, and $90 per credit for non-resident full-time student. Since its inception in 2006, the MSN Accounting Program has grown to over 100 active students. The demand for the program continues to be strong as ever, and potential employers look for students who have fulfilled the CPA education requirement. We anticipate the demand for the program to remain strong in the future. The additional funding will be used to improve and augment the program with technology skills, workshops, expanded access to research databases, and digital tools, research workshops, and career development, including networking events. The college will continue to administer financial aid to students to aid them in the completion of their studies. To the extent that it not being in the resolve was an infirmity, I hope that the explanation solves that problem for this one. And with that, I would move, ask for a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It should pass. The second walk-on resolution is a resolution requesting that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York authorize the General Counsel to execute a university-wide contract with New York Three Rs Association, known as NY3Rs, for the delivery of CUNY library materials. NY3Rs, on behalf of its members, including CUNY and SUNY, procured the services of Velocity Express LLC pursuant to a public solicitation process to provide library materials delivery service. CUNY shall expend an amount not to exceed $805,000 during the potential seven-year contract payable in seven annual installments and chargeable to the Central Office of Library Services. The university will have the right to terminate the contract at any time in its best interest. NY3Rs is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) corporation that receives funding from the State of New York to provide a range of important library programs. SUNY has entered into a similar contract for these services at comparable rates. May I have a move, motion, please, to approve this resolution?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? Questions? With that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? Okay. That's, that is it for the action items. We now have some information items, which is where my ability to rapidly go through an agenda comes to a scratching, screeching halt. And others get to participate and hopefully share my passion for expeditious explanation. Anyway, seriously, information items, report, this is very important, and I don't want you to truncate it, Matt, because it is very important, but a report on the 2013-2014 New York State budget. For that, I will turn the meeting over to Associate Vice Chancellor Matthew Sapienza.
Thank you, Trustee Pantaleo, and thank you for filling in and doing such a terrific job for Chair Loda. Hello, everyone. What we'd like to do for the next few minutes is talk a little bit about the state adopted budget for fiscal 2014. The budget was adopted on time this year. It was adopted the last week of March before the April 1st deadline, when the state fiscal year begins. And so, in front of you, there is a small PowerPoint presentation that will describe what the impact is on CUNY. So, we'll just go through these few slides. On page two of the document is the senior college highlights. Overall, the operating budget for the senior colleges is $2.154 billion, which is a $97.1 million increase over the current year's budget, and that represents about a 4.7% increase. Now, this 97.1 is basically made up of two major components. One is $34.8 million in mandatory needs funding. That's all tied to fringe benefits costs, health insurance, welfare fund, pension costs, and the like. And the other $60.8 million is for a tuition increase. It represents the revenue that will be achieved from the $300 tuition increase that is effective for fall 2013. Now, of that $60.8 million, you see there in that fourth bullet, 13 million of that will need to be set aside for the waivers of tuition that the university is required to provide as part of the state higher education agreement going back to the summer of 2011. So that'll leave about $47.8 million in new revenues to be used for our compact initiative. That last bullet is in bold because these are new additions that were put into the adopted budget as part of the negotiation between the governor and the Assembly and Senate. An additional $1 million was added for the Joseph S. Murphy Institute, which is part of our school professional studies, and $600,000 was added for the SEEK program. So those were two new adds that were not in the governor's executive budget that made it into the adopted budget. Other than those two, everything that the governor proposed in the executive budget for the senior colleges made it into the adopted budget. So again, for the senior colleges, an overall increase of $97 million for next year. On page three, you can see those numbers laid out in a funding table. So you can see our total budget for the senior college in the current year is $2,566 million, and you can see our three main revenue sources there, state aid, city support, and tuition. And you can see the fiscal '14 adopted numbers and the changes. So $36.4 million additional state aid, that's for the fringe benefits, mandatory needs, the Murphy Institute and the SEEK increases, and the tuition of $60.8 million, 4.7% overall increase from year to year. The community colleges, there were many more changes in the adopted budget and positive changes than there were for the senior colleges. The total state adopted budget for the community colleges is $218.5 million, which is an increase of almost $20 million from the current year. And the per FTE base aid was increased by $150. As I think most of you know, the community colleges throughout the State of New York are funded on a per-student FTE basis. In the current year, the number is $2,272 per FTE, and so this $150 increase will bring us up to $2,422 per FTE, and it generates an additional $12.3 million for our community colleges. So that was a really good thing to see put into the adopted budget. We're also going to receive another $3 million because the state has adjusted the base number that they are carrying for student enrollment up to our actual number, and so that generates another $3 million. And so it's a total of $15.3 million in new base aid just for our community colleges from the formula. The other really encouraging thing that was in the adopted budget, which is in that fourth bullet, is that $1.7 million was added by the state for the accelerated study and associates program for the ASAP initiative. And that was really encouraging. Up until now, the ASAP initiative was started in 2009, and up until this point, it's been solely funded by the City of New York. The city provides $6.8 million a year, and we are committed to enhancing the program and opening it up to more students as we go forward because it has been a very successful program. So this additional $1.7 million, we are tremendously grateful to the state to have this additional funding for next year. There was $700,000 provided for building rentals, which was in the exec and made it into the adopted as well. $544,000 for childcare funding, the legislature has been adding in the last several years, and the governor did not include it in his executive budget, but the legislature did restore it in the adopted budget, so that was a really good thing. And the last bullet there, that $2 million for next-generation New York job linkage program, this was incentive funding that was proposed by the governor in the executive budget. He proposed to set aside $2 million for community community colleges and $3 million for SUNY community colleges. And the thinking here is that the governor would like to see community colleges enter into agreements, and that's part of the linkage with local industry, to identify where the job needs are and what are the skills needed for those jobs, and develop programs that could feed from the community colleges into the local industries. The one difference in the adopted budget that was changed from the executive proposal was the governor was proposing to link these to base aid, and in the final adopted budget, it's not linked to base aid. It's $2 million that's set aside. Community colleges will have to prove that they have those agreements and have those linkages with local industry, but if they do, then that's $2 million extra that'll be distributed to our community colleges. So that's a very encouraging program as well. So on page five, you can see the total changes in the community colleges' budget, a total of $41.7 million overall, $19.8 million coming from state aid for those base aid increases, childcare restorations, building rentals, and the next-generation New York job linkage program. So it's a 10% increase in state aid from year to year for our community colleges. So again, it's a very good result for our community colleges in next year's budget. Tuition, again, will be increasing for fall 2013, and that'll generate about $22 million. So it's about $42 million, or a 5.5% increase overall for our community colleges. Lastly, on slide six, financial aid highlights, the governor did not propose any changes to the TAP program in his executive budget, and there were no changes brought forth in the adopted budget as well. So TAP levels will stay the same for next year. On that second bullet there, pursuant to the New York State Higher Education Agreement from 2011, we are mandated to produce an analysis on the tuition assistance program and provide recommendations to the Senate and the Assembly and the governor's office. We're working collaboratively with SUNY on that, and that report is due in November 2013, and so we'll certainly report back to you before then, before the report is formally issued. And that last item there, in the state education department's budget, there are funds that are set aside for opportunity programs which benefit our colleges and our students, and so there were some adds to SED's budget there, $400,000 for liberty partnerships, $700,000 for HEOP programs, and $500,000 for the STEP and CESTEP programs. And so that concludes my report on the adopted budget. Again, it was a very positive budget result for us for next year. Again, just in summary, the senior colleges, very providing stability to the senior colleges for next year in terms of funding our mandatory needs for fringe benefits. Our tuition revenue was recognized by the state for next year, $60 million. And again, for the community colleges, we're very encouraged to see the base aid increase and the funding for the ASAP program, which is greatly appreciated. So we have a very stable budget for next year, and with the new tuition money, we're going to be able to make investments, continued investments in our colleges through the compact initiative. Thank you. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. At our last executive board meeting at the University of San Diego, one of my vice chair brought an issue, and I don't have all the facts, so, but since I saw it here, just I have to ask the question.
Sure.
When it comes to the childcare funding?
Yes.
The vice chair in question is from Medgar Evers, and she brought it to the table saying that their childcare center is really in a big trouble over there. But here, I see that the funding is being restored for the community college. Is there anything that is being done or looked at for that specific college or all the senior college in general in terms of increasing the funding or helping them in any way?
Yeah. For Medgar Evers specifically, there are some challenges in that program for the childcare. We've had one meeting with them, and actually, I'm meeting with them later this week to talk specifically about the childcare center at Medgar Evers. The funding that was restored here, this $544,000, just brings us the level to the funding that we had for this year. So it's not new funding above this year's amount. But, you know, each of the childcare centers operates independently in terms of, they do get state funding, and we do also get some city funding for the childcare centers, and they also charge fees to the students who do participate. But a lot depends on, you know, the cost structure that's built into those childcare centers. A lot of it depends on participation, and so with Medgar Evers, there are some issues there that, you know, they're feeling some fiscal stress in their childcare center. But we're working with them, and we want to make sure that the colleges are able to provide that service to the student parents at Medgar Evers.
Any other questions or comments?
A comment? This is a phenomenal budget at this particular junction of time and space. The chancellor and the entire team did a phenomenal job to get this kind of resources available. We'll be able to maintain the momentum that we've already started in terms of faculty hiring and faculty growth, so very, very well done and deeply appreciated in the faculty ranks.
And I think the governor deserves a great deal of credit, too, for seeing this through, what he started, what, with the compact a couple of years ago.
Right.
I'm sure it's not easy because there are an awful lot of competing demands.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now move into the Subcommittee on Investments. We have a couple of action items, and then before we get to the two of the action items, we'll also have an executive session. Before we get to that, the first action item is approval of the minutes of the meeting of February 14, 2013, February 4th, rather, 2013.
I'll move them.
I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carries. We now get into the information items, performance update through February 28th, and for that, as well as, I believe, spending deliberations, is that also you, Janet?
Yes.
Before we go into executive session. So I would like to turn it over to CUNY's Chief Investment Officer, Janet Crone.
Thank you. Actually, the focus of today's meeting is on the annual spending deliberation for fiscal year 2014, and some changes to our investment policy for clarification purposes. But before we do that, we'll spend just a moment on the performance based upon the results that are available through February 28th of this year. So so far this year through February, the portfolio is moving ahead, it's done very nicely, like the markets have been doing. The calendar year-to-date return is 2.8%. The trailing 12-month return is 6.9%, and our three-year annualized return for periods ended February 28th is 8.4%. So it seems very likely that we'll meet the expected long-term real rate of return that we have as an objective in our policy net of fees. The market value of the pool stands at approximately, stood at approximately $180 million at the end of February. And with that, I will move ahead to the spending deliberations that we do according to NIMFA, so I will ask you for your patience in advance as we go through a number of the factors that are involved in this deliberation. But in sum, the recommendation is to maintain the spending rate of four and a half percent in light of the various factors that will be discussed. So if you turn to the next page, this just basically will provide an agenda that we will first review in light of the passage of NIMFA. The pool has been divided into four similarly situated funds, and then we deliberate on the prudence of the proposed spending rate based upon eight prudence factors that are within the NIMFA regulations. So the four similarly situated funds, since we do this only annually, just to serve as a reminder to people, the four similarly situated funds are academic support, institutional support, scholarships and fellowships, and instruction. And the eight prudence factors are duration and preservation of the endowment fund, purposes of the institution and the endowment funds, general economic conditions, possible effects of inflation and deflation, expected total return from income and appreciation, other resources of the institution, alternatives to expenditure of the endowment fund, as well as the CUNY investment policy. Now, as you can see from the graphic, the slide, rather, there are six factors that we label as universal factors so that they apply to the four categories in a similar fashion. One of the factors is specific by category, and one is a special factor. So with that, we will go to factor two, which is the purpose of the institution and endowment funds for each category, and then we will move on to the universal categories and the special factor. So in terms of factor two, number one, scholarships and fellowships represent 56% of our total spending from the pool. These funds, as you know, are there to attract and retain students and faculty and provide access to education. So these funds are very important to the university. In theory, at least, the funds go in perpetuity, and so we want to preserve the value of the funds. And to do this, the spending rate itself has to not exceed the net real rate of return. So since we don't know what the net real rate of return is as we deliberate, we base the spending rate decision upon the expected returns. Number two, academic support represents 14% of total spending from the pool. By the way, these percentages are based upon fiscal year-end 2012, which is the latest available numbers that we have. These funds, as I'm sure you are well aware, are for professional and technical programs such as library resources, educational equipment, and lab supplies and materials. So it's a key part of our support at the university, and again, these are long-term funds that are designated by donor for these specific purposes. Three, institutional support represents about 4% of the spending from the pool. These funds are used for work-study programs for students that are not eligible for the federal work-study programs. So it plays an important part in really access to education for these students. Again, and not to be repetitive, but these are long-term funds that are designated by donors for these specific purposes. And finally, in this area, instruction represents 3% of spending. These funds help support faculty fellowships and therefore are very important in the university remaining competitive. Again, they're long-term funds designated by donors for this specific purpose. I should not have said finally. There are some additional considerations under factors with regard to purpose in that historically, as you know, the state appropriations represent the majority of the funds for these programs with the pool not being the primary source. But nevertheless, the annual spending rate decision really needs to balance the ever-increasing needs of our students and our faculty as well as the donors' wishes. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Thomas Schmidt-Jefferson of Cambridge to review the universal factors and the specific factors.
Thank you, Janet. So as Janet mentioned, while there are four categories, there are some factors that are universal that basically covers all of them or counts equally for them. The reason for that is that we have co-invested the whole pool, so while there are four categories, it's still one single portfolio, and so clearly some of the return expectations, et cetera, are common for these four different categories. If we start up in the top right corner of this, of the slide that has the, let's see, this slide here, you can see that the first factor is the duration and preservation of the endowment fund. Janet has already covered the duration, they're all there for perpetuity. And in order to preserve them, what we really need to do is to strike this balance between having returns and spending that are more or less the same. If we spend too much, we will deplete the funds, and if we spend too little, it'll grow. So it's about striking that balance. If we go down to the general economic conditions, because clearly, in order to figure out what the future returns will be, we have to look at what do we think about the economic conditions of the day. And it's really mixed at this moment. There's quite a great uncertainty with some factors being positive, some things like housing, energy, some of the other things that are coming in positive. But there are also, as we saw in the unemployment number that came out recently, that there is some fragility to this, and there's also some uncertainty factors that pull in the opposite directions. Europe is certainly one of them that still hasn't been cleared. Uh, Europe is certainly one of them that, that still hasn't been, been cleared. Um, uh, and, and Asia is also one that, that has us, uh, slightly worried. Uh, underneath the, the good returns that we've seen in the last year or so, uh, is very much the, the Fed, uh, monetary easing that we're seeing, not just from the Fed but other, uh, central banks of western economies, uh, have, have pushed money into the system and that's clearly buoying, uh, any risk asset, uh, and that's been positive for the portfolio. Uh, but there's also some longer-term concerns with that approach, uh, in that it can lead to inflation. And so right now, one of the factors that we need to consider is this, uh, inflation or deflation and, uh, it's really a tug of war between inflationary forces and deflationary forces. On the one hand, we have the monetary, uh, uh, easing that's going on, that is clear, clearly has the tendency of being inflationary, uh, but we also have, uh, the, the, the continued fragility of the, of the recovery, the European situation, and the fact that most western economies at least are deleveraging, uh, which is, uh, deflationary in nature. Uh, so right now, it's a tug of war. Uh, unfortunately, it's a very fine balance and, and any misstep, uh, can either lead to, uh, significant inflation or to deflation. Neither of those, uh, would be particularly good for, for investors or for the portfolio. Uh, but there is obviously the possibility that, that they, that this balance, which has been working now for a couple of years, that, that can be maintained and, and to that extent, that would be good for the portfolio. Uh, knowing that they're both deflationary and inflationary forces, uh, we need to, to keep the spending at a level that doesn't, uh, sort of preclude us from, 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 from storing up capital if it turns out that one of these negative scenarios should come to, come to pass. Um, in terms of total expected return, the portfolio is set to sort of by, uh, using the standard numbers, the, the, the long-term assumptions, to return around five percent or a little over five percent. Uh, unfortunately, uh, what's driving, while we're talking about economy, what's really driving returns in the long-term is not so much the economic progress, it really is valuations. And right now, uh, we are in a somewhat challenged situation since everything on the bond side, uh, is very overvalued, uh, and that is a, a significant portion of the, of the portfolio. Uh, on the equity side, uh, things are a little bit better, uh, things are not very expensive, but they're not really cheap either, except for a couple of pockets like emerging markets and Japanese equities, neither of those are, are, are necessarily, uh, for the faint at heart. And while they have it in the portfolio, uh, it's certainly something that, that we have to keep in balance because they tend to be very volatile in, in, in swinging markets. Uh, so, so our expectation is for the intermediate term, uh, is that, that returns, uh, given these valuations likely will be, uh, slightly lower than our long-term projected returns of around five percent. Uh, and that clearly goes into the, uh, determination of whether the four and a half percent is the prudent way to do or whether we should spend more or less. Um, in, in terms of, uh, CUNY's investment policy, as you know, uh, it says that we can spend up to five percent, uh, and so the four and a half percent that's being discussed is clearly prudent and inside that, that, that range. Um, and in terms of other resources that you have up at the top right-hand corner, um, there, there are other resources within the system, but they're all, as you know, tax levy funds and they're typically earmarked for other purposes, uh, and so, uh, as I understand it, at least, uh, it's not possible to divert them and neither would it be, uh, prudent because we have this money and, and we think that a, that a four and a half percent, uh, investment rate, while we can't predict what's going to happen the next year or so, uh, is, is going to be a prudent level of spending. Uh, if we turn to the next page, um, uh, the factor number seven is alternative to expenditures of the endowment fund, a little bit, uh, like we just talked about. This factor is really only there for special situation, crisis situations where, uh, we have like two thousand and eight returns, et cetera, and where spending of any kind or, or spending at four and a half percent level would severely deplete. We don't think we're in that situation at all right now. We think that the strong returns of two thousand and twelve certainly helped the portfolio and should allow for four and a half percent spending, uh, as being prudent. Um, the last, uh, the last slide shows, uh, the spending decision between four and a half and five percent. And again, we had good returns in two thousand and twelve, so some might ask, why not just go ahead and raise it up to the five percent? But we are looking to the future and we are looking to, uh, the fact that there might be, uh, disappointment or hiccups, uh, going forward. And so while last year's return were good, we can't guarantee that the same will be the case for two thousand and thirteen. And it's a perennial truth that it's much easier to, uh, increase spending later on if you have been prudent rather than trying to cut spending if you have spent too much. Uh, and with sort of the, the cautionary principle, uh, we would, we, we, we certainly think that the four and a half percent is prudent, uh, and, and, and according to the eight factors, uh, is, is the prudent way to go. Happy to answer any questions, of course.
Are there any questions?
What was the three-year, uh, rate of return?
Uh, the three-year rate of return is, is pretty good. As you know, the, the eleven, uh, the, two thousand and eleven was, was a negative year, uh, but two thousand and twelve was very strong and two thousand and ten was also very strong. I, uh, eight point four percent, uh, was the return. But again, if you look at the five-year number, that's below the, 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 the five percent real rate of return that we hope to get. So, uh, you know, there's, there, you have to look at it at over several time periods. The three-year looks good, the five-year less, so.
How many years would, would you want to see above five percent before you would recommend increasing the payout?
Well, I, I guess that depends on the economic backdrop. If we, if we could see sort of robust economic growth, et cetera, we'd be much more comfortable raising, uh, raising, uh, returns, uh, but, 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 uh, raising the, the spending, uh, the, the, the fact that we are somewhat concerned about the, the longevity and the, the outlook makes us more cautious about when to raise returns. So I think that the answer to that is variable, depends on, on, on not just the previous returns, but also how, how, what, what the outlook is.
Well, it's, it's a challenge for me at least, 'cause if I could really predict next year's returns, I can assure you I wouldn't be sitting here. Um, so there were always going to be in the situation where we can paint whatever picture we think conforms to our view of what next year's going to be like. So in a, in a, in a decision that's going to impact people and programs, I'm quite comfortable with the four and a half percent this year, but I'm a little concerned that the, the, the criterion by which we actually make this decision seems a little bit, uh, less than, less than, uh, precise and going forward, I think we ought to, you know, I mean, if we, if we, if we came back with another, uh, plus-five percent year, it would be hard to justify, see to me, cutting back on the, uh, on the payout. But for now, uh, fine.
I would, we, we wouldn't disagree. I mean, if you have another robust year, if we end up with twelve, thirteen percent, then I, I agree.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. We got twelve, thirteen percent, I'll double your fees.
Um, it's a doubling your fees, Professor Martella speaking.
Yeah.
Um, we now, uh, we have a, uh, something, a briefing on recommended changes in investment policy guidelines, which I understand required that we go into executive session. So, uh, we will come back for two action, approval of two action items at the end of the executive session. So if we could ask, uh, uh, non-committee members to please step out and we will go into a brief executive session. Matt? Matt? Okay. We're good. Uh, we are now back in public session after completing a discussion in executive session. We have two action items, uh, for this committee. The first is the fiscal year two thousand and fourteen spending rate, uh, which was discussed at some length in open session, uh, by Chief Investment Officer Crone. Uh, can I have a motion to approve that, uh, that initiative, please?
Yes, I move. We continue to keep the spending rate at four point five percent.
All those, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It's passed. Um, the second action item, uh, is an amendment to amended investment policy, which is in appendix B of the, uh, materials that were circulated for the, for the meeting. Rick, did you want to address this before we, uh, actually call the motion?
No, I think just a, a motion to approve those amendments.
Okay.
I'll move it.
I'll second it. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carries. Any other items, Mr., uh, Chancellor, I understand you wanted to make a statement.
Something, uh, consistent with what we've been discussing, but a little off the beaten track. Uh, when Janet indicated that our corpus is about a hundred and eighty million dollars, that is, uh, a number that we've been hearing for quite some time. And the reason for that is that the action at the university is not in the investment pool per se in terms of new money. The only way that this grows is by capital appreciation or, and, 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 and good investments.
Contributions.
Well, and, and the contributions really are at the campuses to individual foundations that were established with the permission of this, uh, of this board and, and our office. I have been deeply concerned that, um, uh, we're not finding a mechanism to bring all of these dollars together and I know that the chairman and I have been talking about this, uh, for some time. Uh, when you add up all of the monies, uh, across the university that reside in individual accounts that are managed, uh, by the foundations or delegated to asset managers by the foundations, we're talking about a considerable amount of money beyond what we have, uh, in our, uh, investment, uh, pool here. Uh, I started an initiative with the chairs of the foundation heads about a year ago, saying that there's got to be an opportunity for us to be working more collaboratively with a expectation that at some time, the monies will start moving from the campuses into the investment pool because any good investor will know that you can make greater moves if you have more money. Uh, if you don't have the money, it's very hard to make the kind of moves, uh, that you want. So I'm, I'm pleased to say that something of a breakthrough has occurred on a university-wide basis. Uh, Carol Huckman, who is the chair of the Queens College Foundation, and Lisa Witten, who is the chair of the Hunter College Foundation, uh, have been meeting with me, uh, over a period of months to try to get all of the foundation heads together. And we finally have now established a working group of foundation heads where we're going to start looking under the hood of each of these foundations and try to learn from each other best practices. And I'm hoping that at the end of this process, we will have a sense of comfort by these foundations to start allowing, university to start, um, uh, managing this money because, uh, I think publicly when we talk about endowment money, we are at a very paltry level. Even though we're raising about a quarter of a billion dollars a year, much of it is not endowment money. It's money that comes in and is spent and we start all over again. And that really has to change. We really have to get much more endowment money and I think the way to do that is to get all of the foundations together and start feeling a comfort level with the central administration and this board being much more actively involved. And I'm hopeful that as a result of this new committee that has been established, we will go a long way to achieving that goal. And I think once we do that, we'll start seeing opportunities for Janet and our consultants to have a lot more corpus, uh, to deal with because we really are so constrained when you're dealing with the, um, I mean, a hundred and eighty million dollars sounds like a lot of money, but it's a paltry amount of money for a university of this size and reputation. So just a little, uh, add-on to the discussion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chancellor. Uh, before we close, is there any matters of business discussion? If not, we're adjourned.
You're here. Thank you. And I'll be.